Okay, we're gonna open up the workshop for the budget there.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, if I can just talk to you and Tom briefly about the school and a quick update to kind of get some direction, if that's okay, before you start going over the municipal. I spoke to the superintendent today and they did have their meeting last night. They're due to vote tomorrow night on their budget. They are using, Tom, clarification from our conversation earlier, they are using, Michelle, 296,000 from their undesignated fund balance towards their general budget to offset taxes. With that move of the 296,000, that brings them to about a 1% increase, as we understand it. The discussion that I had with the superintendent was, you know, we'd really like to do something about a capital improvement line, you know, just in case the roof fails or something else fails. Based on the boiler purchase that they made over the last year or two years, the account is now down to zero. So, there's really two options here. Remember that we need to, without making a decision, because you're still gonna sign the warrant next week and that's your official decision, but we need to have this warrant ready for the school committee and the Warren and Finance to vote on tomorrow night. So, we're looking at adding Article 5, and it can be written one of two ways. It can either say, you know, shall the town raise and appropriate 75,000, raise and appropriate by taxes for this capital improvement account, or, you know, we all know at this point that we're gonna have an influx of funds that the treasurer's gonna go over in regards to having you spend to put in some various reserve accounts. Would the board consider the warrant article reading, you know, moving the 75,000 or 100,000, whatever you decide, from the town's undesignated fund to the school's capital improvement and doing away with the raise and appropriate? So, that was what I was hoping could be the first discussion so we can continue working on the warrant.
I'm thinking about the last one, the raise and appropriate, you know, because, I mean, right now, what we're looking at, our designated fund, I think we have room to do that and be clean.
So, you're saying more go towards just moving it from our undesignated fund and not, why would you raise and appropriate?
I mean, I, yeah, because, I mean, looking at it last year, it was at 467,000 or whatever they put forward to us last year.
750,000 last year.
Is what they, the school moved forward?
Yes.
That's what they gave back to us?
750,000.
Oh, I thought it was four something. Well, I'm thinking, well, say, okay.
So, even more, 750,000.
More, okay.
So, did you hear that, Tom? Are you familiar with the last year's 750,000 that they essentially gave back, if you will, based on their policy?
Yes, I'm familiar with that, thank you.
So, I have no problem reimbursing them back 100 grand back to that fund for emergency use.
So, Tom, do you have thoughts on which way they come up with that money for that capital improvement account?
No, I think whatever's simplest and will be easiest for everyone to understand. I think if six won half does another, and if that makes it easier for, you know, clarity and transparency, I would do that. I thought it was 75,000, then I heard David just reference 100,000. What's that about?
Well, the original, the conversation I had with the superintendent, as I understand it, the conversation last night went anywhere from, you know, 100,000, someone from the Warren and Finance said 50,000, someone else said, well, let's meet at 75,000. I mean, the school would be happy with 100,000. I mean, 75 to 100, they're not gonna, you know, either number's fine with them. When I talked to David originally today and kind of updated him some, we talked about 75, and he just considered raising and rounding it to 100.
I did that because, looking at the possible numbers there that we wanna, you know, with our general surplus, try to organize it out and be, you know, considerate, giving back to each department and see if, you know, would be, I feel that we have the money to give the 100,000 up, you know, right now for their surplus and for their emergency, whatever.
What have they typically carried in their reserve? Wasn't it 50?
50 to 75.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I guess I don't, I don't see any need to do anything above the 75. If they had specific, if they had specific projects, I guess that would be one thing, but to my, to the best, from what I understand, this is simply a reserve.
I mean, as, he, when I spoke to him today, he referenced the, he referenced the roof more than one, that's one, that sounded like the concern to him.
Yeah.
And like I said, this was a last minute thing. Normally, he would've come to you guys at a, at a public meeting and had a, you know, conversation as the superintendent, but it just kind of happened last night at his meeting, you know.
I assume, I assume if it was a roof, it would, for that kind of money, we're talking about a repair rather than a complete refurbishment of the roof.
Right. Sure does.
So, Dennis is speaking from the audience. You're gonna need to either stand up or come closer so that Tom can hear you. So, Dennis was at a meeting last night, and he was gonna clarify. We can also double check with the superintendent.
I'm the one that brought up the 100,000, Tom. And the reason why I did that, the school definitely has had a lot, is a lot older than it was. And I kind of used David, I didn't use his name, but I used a reference. The septic system down there is 30-some odd years old, and it's a huge septic system. And my concern was, if that fails, David had used the number with the rec that he had just previously put in a septic system that cost $100,000. And I would think the school
Would be well more than.
Would be pretty expensive.
Boy.
And David thinks just recommended he thinks we more than that.
I spent $45,000 on plastic on that system, just the plastic.
Yeah, so that's where the 100,000 come from. And if, for some reason, that failed, they wouldn't bear to do anything with it until we had a special town meeting or something, so it could take a week or two weeks. And obviously, they're not gonna spend it previously, you know what I mean? Fortunately, this year, they had the money to buy that boiler, but now it's at zero. So, that's why the Warren and Finance Committee wanted to get that back in place.
And as I understand it, based on their policy, they have to have a little bit of the school committee to just expend out of there, so.
And I, what I'm trying to do here is, I'm looking at, this is a, this is a pretty exceptional year for us. I mean, we haven't got a solid number nailed down yet on what our surplus is gonna be this year, but we have a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
And so, what I'm doing, what I've been thinking about doing, and I wanted to present tonight, was we're, with this monies that we have, I'm not one just to give departments and whoever tons of money just because we've got it, but this is an account here, there, that with the money that we may have, you know, that, this isn't gonna, the money's not gonna disappear, so.
I understand, yeah.
So, you know, it's only gonna help us in the long run, so that's why I thought the 100,000 would be a good idea, because if you look at some of the other ideas that I've got for this, this general surplus money, you know, it's, it's for the long term. You know, I just don't, I don't, I don't wanna go out and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars just because we've got it. I wanna make sure that, you know, we put this money aside for certain stuff that may come up, and 100,000 right now, like Dennis said, the septic system down there is well over that, and 100,000 doesn't get you far anymore in repairs.
I, I'm, I'm fine with all that. I, like you, I, I think what I hear you saying is, I'm not a fan of just dropping money into reserve. I think we should have some intended purpose for it. I, and so, you know, given that you and Dennis know more about the physical conditions down there, and if you feel that's appropriate, I'm fine with that. Having said that, if we had a failure of the septic system mid-school year, how significant is that in disrupting the operations of the school? I would imagine significant, though.
Well, no, that's, that's a, it's a real big deal.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, to keep the place open, you would have to, you know, no doubt, you'd have to get on some sort of schedule with a pump company and keep it pumped out and this and that, you know, that's something we don't wanna have to worry about right now.
No, I guess I'm going with that, is, the way of determining how, you know, what the useful life is that is, and should we be preemptive on something like that over the summer?
Well, I mean, you can, you can have a soil engineer go out and, and do some tests on it, and you can have some water flow tests and this and that done on it, you know, but the septic system, when they fail, they fail, typically, you know? It's not something that, I mean, if you, if you would take a walk all back and I put in hundreds of septic systems and replace
I'm sure.
A bunch of them, and that would be something there, that would be, if you start seeing some wet spots and certain, certain slopes and that, you can, you can tell failure. But, but at this point in time, you know, not even just looking at the septic system right now, we gotta look over the general everything, you know? And having that money sitting aside there, there's a couple of ways we can look at it, Tom. We can take this, this surplus and we can drop taxes a boatload, which I don't recommend.
No, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that either.
But, at the same time, I don't, you know, I've got some ideas that can help fuel the departments, a couple of the departments, well, most of them, okay, with this money, so that will long-term help us. And I'm not a big fan of reserves myself either, okay, but we're in a spot right now where we don't wanna waste the money either. So.
Okay.
So, that's why I, as we go through, you know, we'll, I got some other ideas that I will let, you know, but I don't believe 100,000 is, you know, overshooting the moon at all.
Okay, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Okay, so we'll, I'm gonna send in an email, and Michelle will work on the warrant article. Again, it's not a decision that's being made here because you still have to sign the warrant, it's just something that you'll, you're gonna tentatively approve until we move forward.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, so that piece is done. Next, really, it's gonna be a direction, you know, depending on which way you guys wanna go, so essentially, you've got a couple of conversations to have here. I think the big conversation is what you're gonna do with salaries for each department.
Hey, Jennifer, Jennifer, I'm sorry, I'm having, you're, you're very echoey, and it's hard for me to pick it up. I don't know if there's any intention or not.
No, okay.
So, I just wanna kind of get you on the right, on the track, so the conversation really that needs to be had is twofold. First of all, you gotta come to some sort of agreement on, on salaries, as far as what you wanna do. The idea when we leave this workshop is that the treasurer knows what numbers to put forward in the warrant, so that we can look at that at the next meeting. And then, the other piece is looking at the department's budgets overall, so, you know, you can say, okay, let's set salaries aside, does anybody have any concerns with the town administrator's budget? Does anybody have any concerns with the rect budget? So, now that they've all been presented to us, you know, we can get through some of these, some of these should be fairly, fairly simple to get through, and then go back to the salaries. And then, in the end, we'll go over the number, Michelle will tell us what number it is, and you guys can kind of have a conversation about how you wanna spend that or appropriate.
Well, I think really what we, really to nail down a lot of these departments, so we have to figure the salaries out first.
Yeah, you can do that.
Because, I mean, that's, that's the number that's gonna dictate every department, you know, because of what we're, what we're talking about doing.
Okay.
So.
So, do you wanna go over what your idea for salaries are throughout the municipality and then let Tom give his?
Yeah, yeah, I guess. So, I mean, as I've stated before, my goal would be to, especially with the funds that we have available at this point, and I know, we've also gotta look at, even though we have these funds now, whether or not what's gonna affect us down the road, but there's a bunch of things that come together here. We know right now, we're having a hard time finding help. Every town in, in the state of Maine's having a hard time finding, every company in the town in the state of Maine's having a hard time finding help. The wages are fluctuating huge, they're increasing, which makes it harder for us to, to fill positions. And looking at the salaries right across the board, transfer station, road commissioners, you know, everybody in the office up here staff, that, you know, because of over the years of not, you know, keeping up with the, the other municipalities on our wages, I think this is a time there where, and I use that several percent number because when you calculate that number and you start figuring, adding in all the, you know, say, the guys at the transfer, the people at the transfer station, that brings them up to, you know, I wouldn't say great wage, but it's a lot better than, you know, it's comparable to everybody else. And so, by using that several percent, you, you, we, we looked at the road commissioners' salary, they were asking for a 33%. We had a, we had the workshop last week with them, and, you know, they agreed that, you know, the 7% would work for them. You know, the biggest one we've really gotta work on is try to figure out what we're gonna do with the fire department, okay? Because, you know, if, I, I believe the 7%, and I use that number because I know inflation and then, you know, cost of living's what, 5.9 right now, and we have a hard time right now using those numbers that are given right now because everything's changing so fast. So, even if we did a 5.9, you know, you're only, you know, you're probably only pacifying for the next few months. So, if you, I'm looking at a 7% across the board, anybody that's worked more than a year, and then, and I'm looking at it right across the full board, meaning fire department and all. And I know we got the ARPA funds, because what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to make, get everybody, you know, because we're doing 3%, what was the normal, 3%? Normal was 3%. We do the 7 now, and then, and like I explained to the road commissioners, you, you get the, you get your 7%, then we get you on the same pay scale increases that everybody else makes, so everybody's on the same, on the same page. So, with the fire department, I know they were asking for a $5 an hour raise for just about everybody, right? That was just about everybody.
It was everybody, other than the chief.
Other than the chief. And so, I forget, what was that, 15% raise?
Five, it's 23%.
23, I don't know where you get the 15 from, but, so you got a 23%, which, you know, we're not even halfway there, but, but by looking at the spreadsheet, you know, he gave us, you know, I think we were all that far off in the first place. I mean, do you agree or disagree?
I, I looked at it, and I didn't think we were out of the market at all. It seemed to me, you know, some were higher, some were lower, but on balance, I thought they were fine. You know, you know, I, if I could, David, was there something you wanted to finish? Because I have two things I'd like to say, too.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I mean, I mean, it's, obviously, I wanted to, you know, buy.
Well, I, I, from my experience, I, I think, first off, the last year has been extraordinary in, in terms of the inflation, and I, and it's hitting everybody, and so, I, I do truly appreciate that. My sense is that organizations are gonna have a hard time, both, you know, municipalities, states, nonprofits, corporations, are gonna have a hard time, you know, increasing their compensation costs by 7%, which is where CPI is. But, if this continues, they're gonna have to do that. And I think, but I think this is a transition year, and it's unclear what's gonna happen to inflation going forward. Having said that, I would, I think we need a compensation policy for the town. It feels, it feels somewhat, no, somewhat reactionary and sort of unplanned, and I think.
Well, this isn't unplanned, Tom. I mean, this is something that we've been talking about the last two years, is getting everybody up to, up to the pay scale that they should be at. Last year, we did you, Michelle, and, you know, we've given some smaller raises on other departments, but this is, this is the year that I believe that we can afford making that change, and that doesn't mean every year's gonna be 7% raise, that means this year, everybody gets a 7% that locks, you know, gets everybody up, you know, I mean, right now, you're talking people putting $5 a gallon for heat and fuel in their homes, you know?
Oh, I know, I know, I, I got it, I got it, I, I really do.
So, at the end of the day, Tom, this is a one-shot deal that I think that can get us, get the employees up to, you know, comparable wages, and then we can get back on to 3%, because you never know, next year, you know, the inflation might come down, but at the same time, at least we've got to that point where we've been striving to get to for the last two years, and we just haven't been able to do that.
My sense, and I'm, I'm not an economist, and Lord knows that they're never right anyways, my sense is, higher inflation is here to stay, and so, I don't know that we'll ever see 2 or 3% raises for some time.
You're probably right, you know, but.
And I, what, what I would, I would like to know that we have a basis that we all agree to, and the community understands what the basis ought to be for what I call cost of living increases. And, and then, I think we need to be able to look at the market, and if particular jobs are getting out of the market, we're not paying enough, then I think we ought to have resources to adjust that, because I think the last thing we wanna do is lose good people. We want them to feel that they're compensated fairly. Having said that, I think, you know, you look at a number of people in the community, you know, retirees, I think Social Security went up 5.8, 5.9%, and, which was a significant increase over anything we'd seen in the, in the prior year.
What I found in the past is, Social Security might go up 5.9%, but everybody on Social Security tells they can't live on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying, I'm concerned about going above that, David.
Yeah.
I, until, until we have had a chance to vet what I think is a more comprehensive compensation policy, quite frankly, I'd like to present to the, I think we ought to present to the community. They ought to understand what that is, so they aren't surprised by, by whatever comes forward in the budget is based on a set of factors that, that we, that we set and by and large the community understands. So, you know, the difference between you and I is 5.9 and 7%.
Yeah, which is a lot.
And, and.
If, you know, we already, when we, we spoke to the road commissioners, so, we spoke to the road commissioners, they were at 33% was what they were asking for a raise, got them down to a 7% raise. If you do the math and go to each employee, I think most of them average probably between $1.90 and $2.20 an hour or something like that, roughly averaging, and increase in pay, which would bring like the transfer station guys who are making like $15 an hour or $16 an hour, up to an $18 an hour roughly, wage at 7. You know, and I guess my, you know, I, I watch, I watch the business stuff too, and, you know, and I also drive down through Sanford, and I see Dunkin' Donuts hiring at 17.50 an hour, so it makes it
I hear, yeah.
So, it makes it very difficult, and then when, and cost being selectmen for the last three years, and when we put out our applications for help, we can't get nobody because we're offering $15 an hour, it just doesn't work. And so, the problem is, is, the biggest problem we've been having is that it's not when we go out to try to find a new individual to come to work, because we're offering them more than the people who are already working.
Keeping them.
So, we gotta get those people up first, so then we get the new people, you know, because you know what happens when you hire somebody for more money than the person that's already been working there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not good. So, that's why I think that right now is a time, you know, because like I said, the road commissioners, they agreed that 7%, from a 33 to a 7%, great. If you took a 33% and then the 23% that the fire department's asking, and then we do the 3% and everybody else, it probably average out where we want, we're gonna be anyways. So, I, I just believe that this is the time you gotta go across the board, do it.
With every department, you mean?
Every department, every department, across the board, the same for now, and then, then we can, then we can look at it next year, where maybe some, maybe the fire department will have to go up more percentage than the 3% because of new data that's coming in. The, the rates that they gave us were rates that were pre-proposed, the $5 an hour, they're not already getting that. That's what I think the union or whatever is proposing for a raise, so, you know, that might not even go through, so if, you know, we put the $5 through, they might only get a $2 an hour raise anyways. So, I think we're on, I think the number that I'm using is, you know, kind of averaging out, and it really gets us where we need to be. And we're not that far off, Tom.
Yeah, I, I know. David, would you support having the, the town administrator undertaking the development of a, of a compensation policy for the town for use in next year's budget cycle?
Oh, no, no, that's a great idea. I mean, I mean, I have no problem with that, and I still think right now, this year is something that we can do, because, I mean, that's
No, no, I'm talking about for next year, David.
No, no, that's a great idea, because, I mean, you know, it's tough, because you, you know, we've given some raises because, you know, like I said, we've hired people, and all those people are making less, so we gotta get them up, you know, we really gotta get on a, and I don't know about merit raises, merit raises are tough, you know, I like years of service and this and that, and duh, 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 duh. Obviously, if, you know, people in departments are getting written up, then we can look at that differently, but, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of, you know, putting forward a 3% or 4% or 5%, whatever the national average is, forward every year, because we weren't, we, we've had years where we didn't do that, and it got us behind. That's why we're in the position we're in, and I just wanna get us out of that position, get us looking forward.
Yeah, well, I, on the basis that we're gonna, Jennifer asked you to develop a compensation plan, and, you know, we can work with the board over, over the coming months and have that in place for next year's budget cycle, I'm fine with the 7%.
Okay, let's start. Looking for some samples and work with you on it, and we'll present it to the board at one of the upcoming meetings, the compensation policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, that piece of it is, is good, the salaries, and again, it's not decision-making, we'll still bring it to the full board, but at least it allows the treasurer to put some numbers in a warrant.
Yeah.
So, Michelle, do you wanna just go down, just list off the budgets of the departments as you have in front of you, and they can have discussion if there's anything that was in the proposed that they would wanna change?
So, we have the Board of Selectmen, as it is on your worksheet now, is that a 0% increase?
Yeah, I mean, that's
Is that, did you guys wanna do something different?
That's, that's
I mean, you just said a 7% across the board.
I know, I know, but, I mean, I, I don't like, I'm not, I don't wanna give myself a raise.
See, I tell you that all the time, and you don't
I mean, I, you know, it's one of those deals, I mean, because I don't do this for the, for the job
No, I know, but, but there are other things to look at, too.
But I do have to consider the other two, so. Tom, what do you think?
You know, I, I'm, I'm actually fine with that. You know, having said that, and I know there's a, a culture and a history of, you know, we aren't in this for the pay, but, you know, I think we ought to make sure that we're doing what we can reasonably to incent people to run for these offices. And to incent to which compensation is a factor, I, I think, I, I hate to see us do this for a prolonged period of time, because I, and have it have a detrimental impact on people choosing not to run because of the compensation. I'm fine with nothing this year, that's fine with me, but I just wanted to say that. I think, I think it's important to, you know, have a, you know, a reasonable stipend, because, you know, these positions are low, and it shouldn't just, we don't want it to be just retirees that can afford to do this.
Well, and I understand, you know, I mean, obviously, like I said, you know, I, I don't do it for the money, I do it because I feel
No, I know you don't, David. I don't think any of us do, yeah.
You know, I guess, I got, I see your point on part of it, where I guess, we do put a lot of time up here more than, you know, I, I always said that we, I would be putting in, but, at the end of the day, I'd like to have Kim's opinion on it. I mean, this is something that's, because this is part of, you know, it's
Right, so let's, to be across the board, let's put it in at 7%, so Michelle has some direction, if you guys decide you wanna lower it, so be it.
I'm not making the recommendation to put it forward, because I, you know.
I, I get that. What else in municipal management, general government, that, did you guys have anything else?
Again, I'm having trouble hearing people, I'm very sorry, but it's coming echoey.
Yeah, so, other than that, in general government, I mean, we still have an unknown number with the audit. I've put $20,000 in there just to fill the hole for now.
Yeah, I think that's good. Yeah, I think that's a good.
Audit.
Yeah, um, the stipend positions, which are, um, like your registrar of voters, your forest or health officer, uh, your EMA director.
The health officer, I think we talked about that last.
Right, but Tom, you need to update Tom.
Bring that up to five hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
So you wanted to just give him an update, bye.
Um, so did we wanna increase those stipends by seven percent as well, or?
The health officer.
I don't know why we wouldn't. I think, David, have you got some history on this?
Well, yeah, we, we discussed this at the last, um, last workshop. And, um, to my amazement, that our, uh, health officer that we used quite often last year due to COVID, I think she got a hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty, something like that, I'm sorry.
Maybe doubled in the previous.
And, um, I think we made a recommendation to double that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Well, there's discussion, we didn't make recommendations.
Well, we were recommending it one way or another.
So that, Tom, that one, they would increase that one, Tom, based on the conversation and then seven percent on the rest of the stipends.
Okay.
That, that one, I thought we really had to cherry pick that one out because that, we typically didn't use the health officer very often, so it was kinda like a technicality. But we used her a lot last year, she was a, she was a.
Yeah, it's fine, I get it.
I get it, that's what he was saying to me, I get it.
Um, and then as far as any other changes, anything else in general government that you want to see different?
I looked through the budget and I thought things were reasonable, to be honest with you. Um, what I had asked you to do, and I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to look at. I just would, the, the documents I saw really had the, the two thousand, uh, twenty-two budget compared to the two thousand twenty-three budget. And, um, I know you had done some work on it, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to see it. I wanted to know what these twenty-three budgets looked like compared to the twenty-two forecast and making sure that they were trued up. Cause I think we had a number of lines that on the expense side, uh, that weren't spent and revenue lines that we exceeded the budget. I just wanted to make sure all of that was trued up, yeah, this year.
Right, and the, and the revenues, uh, we won't commit to revenues until tax commitment time anyhow.
Yeah.
Uh, we just, uh, town meeting will accept the use of those revenues. And then, uh, by the time tax commitment comes around, we'll have a better idea. The state will have their numbers tied in and, um, and, and we'll see what the spring is gonna do because our, our, our building last year was up, I wanna say thirty-five percent last year, and right now it's, it's, it's down, um, probably about forty percent from where it was last year, so.
It's a little five percent less than it was.
Yeah, there's, so things are fluctuating a little bit in the building area, but, um, so we'll see, we'll see what happens this spring and, you know, with the price of, the, the cost of building is probably hurting.
Michelle, when you look at the proposed twenty-three budget compared to the twenty-two forecast, pop out to you that would cause you to change any of these numbers?
Um, not significantly. There are some, there are some, um, anticipated, you know, unexpended things of, I mean, like health insurance, but we budget for all, all the policies that are eligible because at any given time during the year, they could lose, their spouse could lose their health insurance and they would have to pick it up here. Uh, so if, you know, it, if they're, if they're able to get it, we budget for it. So there's a little bit of variance there. Um, nothing significant really, other than, um, the stockpile, sand and salt stockpile.
Yeah.
You know, I'm looking at like eighty-six thousand dollars left in that, but.
Yeah, uh, historically has that, um, had a surplus? Is there sort of a structural surplus there or is it? Yeah.
It all depends on the weather. And the last couple, three years there, we've had pretty light winters. But over the years, um, we've overdrafted on that, um, had to do our fifteen percent numerous times. So I, I myself, I don't know what you think, but I, I kinda like to leave that number right there.
Yeah, I mean, and we could, um, when we're ratifying the overdraft in the winter maintenance accounts, we could ratify it from this account, um, this year, you know, so it, or, or on, basically ratifying it from the undesignated fund, uh, which kinda offsets, hopefully not eighty-six thousand dollars, but will offset, you know.
We've got eighty-six right now, um.
This, no, this is what I'm forecasting.
Where you're forecasting, yeah. Um, say if that's, that's what we're gonna have, um, there's no doubt in my mind, all last year, what they did is they, they stockpiled a bunch of material in there.
Right, they got it.
So they might, they might, that number might drop considerably if they do that.
Right, and I don't think they bought any sand to share yet.
No, no, they haven't, well, they did, they put in fifteen hundred yards, but they haven't put any elk.
Right.
You know, since first of the year or anything, but they get low, they're getting down, so.
And they can, they can, Michelle, do that out of the, that can be part of the fifteen percent or no? That they can overdraft, or you said there's still?
Well, they're, so they're all, they're all, they're all set with the stockpile, that's fine. It's just, it's their, their actual road maintenance on each district that's, that we've hit the, um, overdraft on now.
Yeah.
Let me, uh, look, I don't wanna spend too much time on it, but I, I, I don't wanna get us distracted. But one way of thinking about it, if you went back for the last six years and looked at what the peak was for the volume of material, not price, but material, that was, you know, sort of take the worst winter, if you will, and extended that out based on current pricing.
Take it from.
What would that suggest you need for a budget?
Right.
Yeah, the only, only problem with that we're gonna have is our solid prices are starting to fluctuate quite a bit different from when I was road commissioner to now. And right now with shipping costs and everything else, I mean, anyway, I don't wanna, you know, play Notre Dame or anything and predict the future, but, um, I can't imagine it getting much cheaper, so.
No, I, I can't imagine either. Materials are gonna get nothing but expensive. I'm, I'm just trying to break it into two pieces. One is the price, you know, set your budget for whatever you think your forecasted price is. And the other is how much, you know, the quantity of the material. And I think the quantity of materials, you set it at what the peak has been for the prior number of years. And then the only, you know, risk you have is on the price side.
I see.
And we're not in the, um, the twenty, was it ten thousand? They were adding on for the, uh, winter maintenance. Did you put that in here?
Um, so no, based on our workshop, um, our last workshop, we, we didn't add the ten thousand dollars into winter maintenance because of that fifteen percent.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but we did increase this, they have requested twenty-five thousand on the summer and fifty, fifty on the, um, surfacing there.
Yeah, per side extra.
Right.
That, I believe, Tom, you have any concerns with any of that?
Uh, what's the summer maintenance for? Have there specific projects they have in mind?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a.
It falls in line with the proposed increase in equipment rates.
Yeah.
Okay.
So when you increase the rates, you know, you don't wanna get less done just cause you need more money to compensate it.
Okay, do we, I'm, I'm sorry, do we shift from, uh, the sand salt budget to summer maintenance? Or are we?
Yeah.
Where do we end up on the, on the sand salt budget?
Well, you wanted to look at the past six years, but unfortunately I, the internet keeps cutting out, so I can't get that information on my computer.
I didn't expect you to, I didn't suggest that. I was, look, I, um, if you do that, Michelle, and it comes in reasonable, reasonably close to what you have, I think that's fine. If you find there's a significant difference, um, I, I would suggest adjusting it one way or the other. Any concerns with that, David?
Yeah, um, we've done it in the past, it's always come back to bite us. Um, yeah, there's nothing worse than, you know, your old materials and that, and so you know, you get this block, cause you know, we've been kinda, kinda spoiled the last three, four years, well, three years anyways. And you have one of those blockbuster winters and you go, why'd you drop the budget? You know, the money's not going anyways. So I would prefer, um, to keep that number right where it is for now. And obviously maybe take a look at it next year if we come, uh, with another eighty, ninety thousand dollars. It projected, cause that's just a projected cost right now. I, I believe that number's gonna drop, um, it may. Um, but if we start averaging sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year, um, of money just sitting there, then you know, obviously, um, you know, we, we may wanna, we may wanna look at that, but for now.
Did I understand, did I understand, David, you're saying that that line sort of stands on its own and if there's a surplus, it can't be used for other things?
That, that money's for stockpile only.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's, uh, that, uh, makes it a little different for me too. So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and so the, the summer maintenance and the paving money increases, that's okay?
Didn't we have, do I have a surplus reserve for that anyways? And it's my understanding we haven't been spending our paving money and summer maintenance money.
Uh, they've been working, they've been working at spending it this year. Um, you know, they're both fairly new. This past year, um, only one side of town really got the paving that they wanted because of COVID and the paving company being, uh, shut down for two weeks and getting behind on their schedule.
Look, we still haven't until July first to have that much.
Right, and they have some, they have some plans for the spring, um, you know, and it's always weather pending with them, um, to get some things accomplished before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that we've been trying to do for many, many years is get the, uh, road budget up to a point where they can, uh, you know, service these roads. Okay, I mean, I think when I was road commissioner, it was ninety thousand dollars. When I, when I left, ninety, ninety, ninety-nine thousand, I think it was ninety-nine thousand. And now these guys are about, this'll make them up to two fifty apiece, which is, you know, really, a really good thing. But you know, I am concerned too that, you know, if we start having a hundred thousand dollars a year rolled over on paving, that, you know, that's something that we'll have to look at. But, um, with the last few years, you know, we had a, we had issues, you know, we had a death and all that, which rolled a bunch of money over and, you know, um, getting people into position, which did the same thing. So I, I think these guys got a pretty good plan. And, um, I don't think we wanna, we wanna drop this number at all.
Okay.
All right. Um, the fire department, so we've decided, um, to not use the proposed five dollar an hour increase. We're going with the seven percent. Um, they have no significant increases elsewhere other than, um, things that needed to be increased for, you know, the medical director and so forth.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And just the other contractual increases they had.
Exactly, um, they have asked for two pieces of, of equipment and have proposed using ARPA funds to purchase those two pieces of equipment. Um, the total for the two pieces of equipment are forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. How do the two of you feel on putting that forward?
Out of the ARPA funds, right?
Well, we were talking about putting the raises, the raises were gonna be covered by the ARPA funds in the first place, which was, what, what did we say, that was twenty-three percent? So there's gonna be quite a bit of money left in the ARPA funds, I can't imagine that being an issue at all.
And you have what, two years to spend it, Michelle, three, two?
Uh, it has to be spent, oh, no, it has to be committed by twenty-twenty-four and spent by twenty-twenty-six.
So that was a question, Tom, you had asked, so it's not something you have to address all at once.
Yeah.
So the increases and the two pieces of equipment, um, we, I know we're gonna hopefully talk about the water softener for the town hall. So even if we chip away at it, and Michelle in the end is gonna talk about the required public hearings and trying to get some input as well from the, the townspeople on that.
I, I think it's a good idea to put, use those ARPA funds in that situation.
For those equipment, absolutely.
Oh, so, and that, you know, I think that's a good application for that. And of course, like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna use some of those funds for the, uh, the raises and all that, which will give us time next year, try to figure out exactly what we're gonna do with the rest of the money.
Do some next year as well. Are you good with that, Tom?
I, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable using the ARPA funds for capital. I, uh, for operating purposes such as salaries and other things, um, I, I just would need to understand how we're gonna get off that so that we don't have a tax fight when we do. And, uh, so, um, that's generally a concern, but I don't think that's happening right now. So let's, let's, uh, have them develop, uh, further plans, we'll look at the compensation again. We, we may find that, uh, the increases in the fire department, when we go back and look at the market, uh, over the next year, those increases or some form of them become necessary, and we'll have to deal with it, and ARPA funds may play in at that time.
So Tom, your concern is that you're, uh, you're worried about the ARPA funds covering the, um, the seven percent raise this year? And you're worried about the shock value later on down the road when the ARPA funds disappear?
Yeah, well, I, I thought the, um, the extent to which, well, um, let me clarify. Are we planning on using ARPA funds for any, what I'll call, operating costs this year? Or are we planning on developing a plan as to how to use those in future years?
Well, you know, if, if the town, if the board is voting to put forward the seven percent townwide, it wouldn't make sense to use ARPA for, for, um, any increases with the fire department, as far as I'm concerned, because the seven percent, you're gonna have to support that going forward, you know, when, when you run out of ARPA funds. Um, using ARPA funds for, um, like a five dollar increase as it was proposed. Uh, I did have a conversation with, um, Neil Goldberg up at, uh, May Municipal. He is, uh, heavy into the ARPA laws and ins and outs. And what they're suggesting to municipalities is to, to not do that. Because, you know, at, as it was proposed, you know, phase out, year four, the town absorbs the whole five dollars, which was like eighty-seven thousand dollars.
You have them on it this year, so why?
What, what he, what they are suggesting is an end of the year bonus. If you work two thousand hours, um, through the year, at the end of the year, you get a thousand dollar paycheck or some, you know, a, a set amount of money, um,
Yeah, yeah.
And it, as it, as a bonus, a retention incentive bonus, um, rather than an hourly increase. Because one, it becomes hard to track because you have to keep everything separate with those, the grant funds. So, you know, you would have to pay twenty-one dollars an hour out of a town account and five dollars an hour out of an ARPA account. Um, they can't make over twenty-five thousand dollars in ARPA, of, using ARPA funds in, in that, the period of, of it being used. Um, they also can't make more than a hundred and fifty percent of the average median wage in, for all occupations in the state. So there's just a lot of tracking there when you're, when you're starting to pay hourly and doing an increase, you know, over three years, three, four years.
I, I think, I think the bonus approach, as I understand the philosophy of this, um, you know, one of the purposes of these monies was to, um, to compensate people who were in public safety and healthcare that really worked during the pandemic to provide added compensation for those efforts. Is that not true?
Yes, so it, it, essential workers and not, not necessarily just emergency responders, um.
Essential workers.
Essential workers, because that, that falls under your grocery workers, your transfer station who are touching all of everybody's infected trash and, uh, you know, the, the support, uh, staff that supports those. Uh, you know, the, the support, uh, staff that supports those type of, uh, positions.
So, Michelle, can I ask you a question? So with the, um, if you did something with the bonuses with the fire and rescue, based on, let's say, two thousand hours, would, it's gonna be, you said they, they can't make more than a certain amount from the town, just from the one employer. I guess I'm wondering, is it going to, would everybody that does per diem shifts for the town of Acton that assume they work the amount of hours, you know, we require, would they all qualify for it? Or would it take their other jobs they might have elsewhere?
No, so it's, we can, the town of Acton can only use less than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Which is a lot of money, yeah.
Um, but, I mean, when you're talking that five dollars over a period of three or four years, um, they're getting close to that twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, if they're working overtime.
Yeah.
I just would wanna make sure that all of the fire department, everybody, you know, if you decide to do that, that everybody is gonna be eligible for it. Because as, as she mentioned, I mean, the twenty-five.
Some would get more than others due to their job.
Well, no, if she, if you.
Want to do a flat.
If she did a fat, a flat thousand dollars, let's say, if you worked over two thousand hours. But Michelle's got a valid point. If you start having that conversation, it's not just for the fire department. So if you looked at, at townwide, you know, the transfer station, if you looked at all of those, I mean, it's a total of, of twenty-five thousand. Um, and we're, and we're gonna get to it at some point. It's, it's based on the median, Michelle, there's just one employee that's not gonna qualify, correct? Anybody else that was essential?
Correct.
Okay, so based on.
I'm sorry, would it make sense to, uh, deal with this? You know, I like the idea of the bonus. I don't know where you are on it, David, but I, I like the idea of it.
I, I, I like the idea of not using the ARPA funds myself to do the pay raises. That was one concern I had in the first place. Because my concern was, um, you know, we've had instances in town where, uh, we, you know, say somebody wants to donate money to a certain department, and then they're gonna, you know, say they give a million dollars over so many years, and they get the check for the first year, then the next year, they cop out with town acting, says, gotta take, take up the slack for that, you know? And I don't wanna, and it's the same idea with this, is, you know, we got the ARPA funds, maybe two years will pay for it or whatever. But in the third or fourth year is where we're gonna feel the, oh, wow, you know? Um, now we don't have that, you know, that money now, what are we gonna do? Well, you're gonna raise taxes.
Yeah.
So, um, myself, I would rather run that through our regular, our regular monies and look at the ARPA funds and bonus. I have no issue with the bonuses, uh, other than the, the one person who can't get it. Um, that's kinda frustrating, but, um, but I think. What's that?
Who's that?
Well, the person that worked through the whole, whole thing. A town administrator is not eligible for it. So, um, but, but at the same time, um, I'm sure, Michelle, you can make up some sort of, um, proposal, what you think the bonuses, you know? I, I, I'm kinda confused on when you're talking about the twenty-five thousand and all that. I don't, what do you mean by that?
So, um, so over, like, as, as the fire chief was proposing the five dollar an hour increase.
Yeah.
Five dollars an hour times, you know, forty hours a week.
Yeah.
Not looking at the total salary, but just that five, just the ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Five dollars an hour times their forty, fifty, thirty hours a week.
That would make it was twenty-five thousand, which would be over the threshold.
Right.
Okay, I understand now.
So they would be making too much.
And then the average medium is?
Uh, I don't.
So it really didn't work in the first place?
It's like fifty-five, well, a hundred and fifty percent of the average medium is.
And that's why I asked about the other jobs. So for Michelle, for example, you know, she's, they're not, they're not combining. I worried about somebody like the fire chief. You know, they're not gonna take his Sanford, his job and add it to Acton. They're not gonna take Michelle's job and add it to Shapley. Do you know what I mean? It's just from whatever they gross from the town of Acton.
Right.
And that's why I'm over-eligible, because I'm the one that works.
Can I suggest something? Can I suggest something? Would, would it be possible to develop a, I, I, I'm gonna get the terminology right, wrong, but a separate warrant to deal with bonuses? That sort of considers all these things that Michelle is talking about? And that indicates.
It would have to be anyone's.
The majority of it is funded from ARPA. The extent to which there are people who are really putting in a similar effort, who are, you know, equally deserving, and, and have that all put into a warrant, and the majority of which is gonna be funded from ARPA. And, you know, put it forward as a separate. Okay, and, and, and so it, it could have two funding sources. ARPA and, you know, general revenues. And whoever is left out, if they're deserving, let's not leave them out simply because they don't qualify under ARPA.
Yeah, no, I was, I was thinking the same thing. Uh, it would have to go to a warrant article anyways, you know, so we can get those monies out to release it, so.
Can they do that, Michelle?
Absolutely, they can do that.
What's that?
No, I was just asking if you could do that. I mean, that's, that's kind of you. I mean, and I, you know, and, and obviously, it's gonna be a public conversation at some point, but I do appreciate that from David and Tom, to even be considered. But I want you to know that I support them for everybody that worked through it, you know, with or without me.
Well, I just, I look at it like, uh, you know, everybody, everybody's gonna get this. Everybody deserves, one person, everybody deserves it at this point, you know? But, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we're not part of that, right?
No.
I don't know what that amounts to.
Electoral officials can't benefit any from the ARPA funds.
Good, good. I don't wanna sub here and make it sound like I'm trying to give myself a bonus, so I, I'm not. I just, I just think everybody that worked through this, you know, really, if we're gonna go that route, then everybody should be on the same page.
So do you have some sort of number so that she can count employees and figure out a warrant article? Do you have some sort of, what did you say, a thousand? I know, and, and I, I sent you guys an email, too, that Mr. Long forwarded, that he supported it as an individual. It wasn't a warrant in finance. But if you give Michelle some sort of number, she can at least work on the warrant article and.
And you could have, and they suggest, you could have steps, because you have your part-time people that you can expect are gonna work.
Yeah.
Uh.
You wouldn't wanna give a part-timer as much as a full-timer, right? I just wouldn't be right.
Well, uh, I, I, I would be happy to, you know, once you and, uh, once, uh, the town administration develops a proposal, let's take a look at it, and we can apply our own judgment to this. And, um, I, I think this is going in the right direction.
Should we?
Get some sort of number, yes.
That we wanna leave.
So we can.
Yeah, we gotta come up with some sort of number here to plug in. So, you know, if you say, um, you know, how much we got in ARPAs? What's the ARPA funds?
Two seventy-six, eight, nineteen.
Two seventy-six, and you figure fire department is asking for forty-four in equipment.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, you know, you've got the water softener that we're talking about, maybe eight thousand.
I think.
We've got so much there.
Don't you have a presentation there of stuff that we can be able to, yeah, right here? Uh, that we're gonna be able to spend this stuff on? It'd be nice, uh, I know Shapley's building a building, whether they got one project they're gonna do with it. And so, you know.
Well, it hasn't been voted on.
Well, I know, but, but it's a similar idea.
Right, right.
You know, we're, we're gonna get something out of this, where, um, so say, fire department gets their forty thousand dollars worth of tools, which is great.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we figure, say, we decide to spend, um, sixty thousand dollars in bonuses out of it.
Wow.
Okay? I don't, there's a lot of employees.
Yeah, no, no, right, so that, so you do that, that, and.
Everything else, and, okay, but you just take that sixty thousand dollars, forget, you know, how many full-time employees, how many part-time employees, divide it up, see what it comes out to a wage and see if it's realistic.
Yeah.
You know, um, you know, I'm just shooting from the hip here, because really, honestly, how do you really say, wow, how much were they worth?
Right, and you.
Now they're gonna get a bonus for what they were worth.
Right, and you've gotta set some sort of guidelines on the time of employment.
Well, yeah, definitely.
Because that's, you know what I mean, that's gonna play effect, right?
That's when they would probably be under the part-time, you know, whenever the part-time is gonna, if they just started five months ago, you know, you give them the part-time bonus or whatever.
Right.
Whenever they started. I, I don't think that's hard to, you know, to dictate that. I was just coming up with the number.
Right.
That we can plug in for, you know, our warrant.
So if you have some sort of idea, then we can, if you give us, if you wanna start with a six, six thousand, Tom? Is that high, low? Just so we.
How many employees we got?
We have eighty employees.
Okay, so.
But we've got, I mean, but they're not all gonna be eligible, are they? I mean, they had, are you saying, I guess that's the piece, are you saying that they had to be, they had to be employed during the height of COVID?
I would think, I mean, honestly, you know, that's what it's for.
Yeah, yes, okay. So we have to go back to the governor's executive order. I mean, we know that she lifted it on May twenty-fourth of, of twenty-one. So they had to be employed as of what date? You know, if the governor's orders and mask mandates, and I, and I'm sorry, I remember that date only because it's my birthday. So that was the day they lifted everything, was May twenty-fourth. So before Michelle and I can figure out how many employees are gonna be eligible, we need to know what date you wanted them to be employed by.
Yeah, but.
I, I, I would suggest February of two thousand, when I think everything became an issue.
Through.
February two thousand twenty, right?
Yeah, two, yeah, two thousand twenty, I'm sorry.
So only the current employees that are still here that were on the payroll on February twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so do you have any idea roughly how many employees that might drop it by? And that's gonna adjust a little bit, but.
Um.
I would think it'd be close to the same.
It'd be about close to the same.
Because you, you, most of them will replenish whoever quits or will leave.
Um, we have, you know, I'm gonna guess maybe ten election workers that fall in that eighty number. Uh.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't think of them.
But, uh.
Do you want us to start with fifty or sixty thousand, just to get it, get an idea? Does that seem like a fair number, Michelle?
If you got eighty employees.
Hello?
Eighty employees and sixty thousand, it's less than a thousand dollars per employee. So if, if say, uh, yeah, that might work, 'cause some of them are only gonna get half, half that. Say a thousand dollars, be half that, be five hundred. I'm just doing math in quick in my head here, but if you take that.
Where did you come up with the sixty thousand? I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
I just threw a number, I started shooting from the hip.
You picked a number, yeah.
You know, we got eighty employees.
Oh, I see.
What it is, I'm trying to, I like to leave, leave a chunk of money there that we can delegate towards something special. You know?
I see.
Special.
Okay.
Like a new car.
Well, we do, you know, we, we've got.
Like a water softener.
Yeah, water softener, it'd be nice there, pipes in the building, he can.
And just, so I can throw in my plug, Poland Springs is gonna stop delivering water to us soon. They've, they're not renting the coolers anymore, they're, they're all done, so we need, and that's minimal. I mean, I trust if the fire department is doing forty-four, we can throw in a softener.
Yeah.
Do we have to decide the amount right now, or can we just?
Well, it's the.
Number to plug in.
It's the only way that Michelle is gonna be able to take the next step and figure out what it does to the warrant. I mean, you can certainly adjust it, Tom, in any way, but we need some number to start with.
Okay.
So if you don't wanna do the flat number of sixty thousand, then say, part-time employees will get a thousand. Anything over that will get two thousand. Give us some sort of guidance so we can.
Get out a thousand and five hundred.
Five hundred and a thousand, so if you wanna.
So, you know, if you got, uh, sixty employees.
Yeah.
It'd be six, uh.
Most would be sixty thousand, right?
And, uh, and then you got the net, the twenty.
Twenty-seven and part-time.
It's twenty-seven?
Did you say eighty-seven?
I thought you said eighty.
Eighty.
Oh, sorry.
So say you got twenty part-timers, that's five hundred dollars apiece when you want.
Well, I think your numbers are gonna be opposite there.
You know, the other thing is, I would love to make this a net bonus. Gross it up for taxes.
Tax.
He said that, what did he say?
Gross it up for tax, so that they're gonna take home after tax. They're gonna take home.
A thousand and five hundred.
Right.
And whenever that number comes, so I ain't got my calculator, Tom, you're, you're on.
It's gonna be another, it's gonna be another thirty percent or so. Isn't that right, Michelle? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so Michelle will play with that, do her magic.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a very reasonable and modest amount, given what I think people were asked to do during that period. And so, and, and given that the funds are really designed for that, you know, I, I, I think that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I know the state, what the state did was they did two thousand dollars to everybody, regardless of.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
How much they worked, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know.
All right, what's next, Michelle?
Um, what's next? Um, can we do roads, we did fire department? Uh, transfer station.
Where are we at, transfer station now?
Sunday hours or no Sunday hours year-round?
I think at this point right now, Tom, we are getting an attendant in here.
Yeah.
And, uh, um, I have to speak into, um, an employer or two up there as the liaison. Um, I don't believe that is something that they wanna do in the first place.
I have to tell you, I've had, I just had another gentleman today at the window pointing out that they are not interested, as a resident, that they don't think it's necessary.
I think our, our step right now is, uh, let's get an attendant, uh, supervisor in there. Um, we'll budget for the season that we normally budget for. And then, um, we can look at it at another time.
Michelle, did you increase those lines that you thought needed to be?
Um, I increased the, yeah, the transfer station line. We brought the demo up. We added the wood chipping.
Good.
And we increased, uh, the pine tree, because their price, their tonnage price goes up a dollar every year. Uh, they go, uh, the average is a thousand tons, so we increased, increased pine tree by a thousand.
How much is a demo going out per ton? Do you, do you remember off the top of your head?
Um, I don't remember off the top of my head. Bob could probably answer that, but the thing is, is they have fuel charges, so.
Well, I know, I, well, what I'm saying is, I just called the other day, and I've been paying between, uh, well, I pay a hundred and five dollars a ton for my disposal, and I'm paying now up to a hundred and seventeen dollars a ton. And how much has gone up in the last year? So I didn't know if this is something that we wanna, you, you pumped a number up on the demo, didn't you?
Yes, yeah.
How much did we do that, or how much did we do the demo for?
Uh, I think we, well, let's see.
I need some glasses.
We brought up fifteen thousand.
You think that's good? And, and remember, Tom and David, I mean, at some point, if, if the fifteen percent serves to not be enough, I mean, you're probably gonna have to start having a conversation about possibly charges and do the free demo load for, per resident.
We're not there yet, we won't do it, but.
That's what I'm saying, if we go over the fifteen.
I think, you know, just from here, what I was hearing at the last budget meeting that we had was that there are contractors that have been going in there without a town dump sticker, saying that they're working in the town, but, I mean, if.
I followed them from Sanford one day, I wasn't sure if they're going that way, but.
That demo was not coming from Acton, not all of that demo was coming. So I think we need to, one, require a dump sticker, and two, we need to go back to demo permits.
Because, yeah, we, remember, we were also told, and I, I mean, this is, you know, that we weren't getting the calls in the town office confirming demo load. So going back to the demo permits, I've got that on the next agenda, because we've got to do something. That staff shouldn't be stopping the call, I mean, they have to come here and get a demo load. It's the only way, you know?
Yeah.
There's been a huge increase.
Oh, no, no, it's a huge increase, and unfortunately, uh, I'm, I'd be, being a selectman, maybe I should've followed the truck, but I know it's, there's stuff coming from Sanford.
No.
And, uh, um, but we, we've gotta do something different there. I don't just how we're gonna do it. I mean, is that something that we wanna, we wanna put back in the code enforcement? Or is it something we think that the town administrator can just give out at the window?
I think it makes sense to go through code enforcement.
It does make sense, because codes are supposed to be determining if a permit is required, and it also gets picked up through assessing that way. So if you redo the kitchen, it's a possible revaluation necessary.
One issue I had with the last demo permit, I'm not sure, I might be wrong, it's been a little while, but um, you get the demo permit, you can haul as much as you want with that permit, correct, from that job?
Say it one more time?
I, I believe if I'm not mistaken, the last time we did the demo permit, someone would get a demo permit,[1682.62] I, I believe if I'm not mistaken, the last time we did the demo permit, someone would get a demo permit, and they'd rip down their whole barn and end up at our transfer station.
That could be correct.
And that's what I'm trying to get away from.
Okay, so you can, you know, like I said, we'll put it on the agenda, list out stipulations, you know what I mean, exactly that.
We're gonna have to do something like that, because.
Yep.
I think we have one, one person haul their whole barn to the transfer station.
Right.
So, um, and that's, and that costs us a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Especially with the building going on, and, you know, it's tough, because, you know, I do, I'm on excavation sites every day, and there's little dump trails on those jobs. Those dump trails jump from this job to this job to this job, and if they end up up there, you know.
I'd love to be able to take my Lebanon pile to the transfer station.
Your what?
My Lebanon pile, if we're gonna, you know, I mean, it's kinda the same thing, right? I mean, you tear down a house, not to act in. I'm just saying, that's the example, taking that demo back, they wouldn't allow that.
But that's what happens, and so if we do some sort of demo permit, maybe we can get some of our money back.
Right, exactly. Um, okay, next thing.
We don't know.
Um, the recreation capital projects proposed.
Okay, uh.
So they have their regular budget. Um, and then they have proposed.
Nine, eight.
Eight.
Yep.
Uh, they have proposed the, basically the parking lot, trees and parking lot project, and then a part, project for septic and bathrooms.
And, and, and what's the amount on those individually?
Um, thirty-five for the septic.
Thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, septic and bathroom and, um, forty for the trees and driveway road.
I.
Project.
So the, the issue I have, Tom, I, I, I'm not in favor of the thirty-five thousand for the septic and bathrooms at this point in time. First of all, we shouldn't be putting money forward that we have no idea what it's gonna cost, 'cause no, no septic design, nothing.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
And, and I still think that I'd really like to get a rec director in there before we go hog wild on some of these ideas, you know, just, just kinda condense everything, um.
But it's my understanding that water parties, you know, must work reasonably well, and so it's not as though it's a, uh, a sanitation issue or anything. Um, there is a solution that can work temporarily.
And one, one can, one concern that I do have, 'cause, you know, this is what I do for a living, it was, um, so they got a well up there, the, the, the grounds are wet. So when you put a septic system up there, it's gonna be a big deal, but the driest area they have is the lower part of the park, where they wanna put the new parking lot. Um, and that, and of course, you gotta be a hundred feet away from your well that you just installed there, so what my concern is, is without having a septic design and some sort of plan, they may have to put the septic underneath the driveway.
Yeah.
So I'd hate to have them go put the driveway in if the septic system goes underneath the driveway, so you, you're gonna be doing your job twice. So, um, you know, in my experience, you know, 'cause you've got the soccer field itself, the baseball field, the other parking area, and you can't put a septic there, 'cause you gotta be a hundred feet away from the well. That puts a septic, and you can't go over by the retention pond, that puts your septic system on the other side of the soccer field, where you don't have a lot of room to play if you put in a huge parking lot, so.
Could we, could we put aside money to, to perform that design, David, this year?
Oh, yeah.
And maybe, and maybe, uh, seed fund with, you know, some amount of money, uh, something that we could top off next year to do the project with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really wanna slow down the, the parking lot, but like I said, I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna have a combined project. Which kinda sucks, because, you know, and really, if you go in and spend all that money to put the parking lot in, and that's where, that's the only place you can get your soil test. You're gonna rip up the brand-new parking lot you just put in, so. I do believe we should put money forward to get the design, um, so I, I, I guess at the end of the day, I'm, I'm not really looking, I'm not, I don't believe it's a good idea to put the whole forty through for the, the parking lot. I mean, I do believe we gotta cut the trees and this and that, they can do all that, I just don't wanna see him do the job twice.
And they have some more plan for this year, right?
Could be done temporarily that wouldn't be wasteful, that would allow parking so that people aren't parking on the road, which is what I understand.
I, I, I think, oh, I think they could, I mean, if they go in and, I just hate to have them disturb the area so they can't get their soil test, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, so why not, why not order of operations, put money forward for them to get the design, make them do the design before they start building the road and parking lot, all the same fiscal year?
If, 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 if it comes, uh, you know, 'cause I saw the thirty-five thousand dollars for the septic in the bathrooms, and, and like, and like Dennis said earlier, you know, I, I've done, you know, it doesn't, doesn't take long to do thirty-five thousand dollars nowadays to do a septic system, you know.
Yeah.
And that included the bathrooms, I guess, so, you know, really, until we see a plan and a perk test and where that's gonna go, a, a design for something like that will range between five and a thousand dollars. So I, I'd really like to see that, I wouldn't mind putting money forward, I, I can't see why we couldn't go up there and take a look at it with, uh, Will, and, you know, get, I, I have a pretty good idea, you know, like I said, I do this all the time. You know, maybe, maybe get them so they, they can start part of the parking lot, you know, so they can get something going, uh, and put forward. I hate to put the whole thing forward and not use it because of the other side, so, um.
Now, I'm thinking put forward part of it, David.
Yeah.
And that would allow them to do the design, and I, I think there's a safety issue with people parking on the road.
Oh, no, there is.
Anything we can do to provide some immediate relief to that, but know that we don't wanna end up ripping something up that we have to eventually redo, it, it, you know, let's avoid that. So, yeah, yeah, I think we're on the same page.
So what do you wanna, what do you wanna put that number at?
Well, okay, what are we, uh, forty thousand for that part of it, so, I mean, Tom, put twenty thousand.
And, and Michelle mentioned the operating budget, do you wanna, you wanna move it to there, or?
Huh? I was reading.
I don't think, I don't know if he didn't hear you. Did you mention taking, putting it in the operating budget instead?
No.
You said something about the operating budget.
No, I, I said, you know, raising the, the, including the funds in the operating budget to create, I don't know what it costs to create.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But I'm imagining that, you know.
It's five to a thousand dollars for a septic design.
So we add that on to the operating.
On the operating, that's what I heard.
And then.
We still have the twenty thousand that, it's already, so what, we put forward the twenty thousand?
So you're adding.
Thousand for the, for the parking lot.
Yeah, 'cause they're not gonna do the whole thing.
Right.
You know, I, I just, that's what I'm thinking right now, so they can get.
That sounds right, David, that sounds right.
I'm just trying to be proactive.
A thousand in the operating budget.
Yeah, yeah.
For the design.
Twenty thousand from their capital fund for the parking lot.
Well, I would say, I would say that we've got a combined project for a parking lot and a septic system. And we're gonna do a design, and that design will lay out what the cost is for the total project, and the design, I guess, would also indicate the sequence of which project goes first, and, you know, David, you may be right, it's probably the septic, but I would just say the money of, of twenty thousand dollars will allow us to address the immediate highest priority like sa- like, you know, safety issues for that, which is likely a parking lot, and it may be just part of it.
Yeah, well, I agree. And, uh, so we're, we're gonna disregard the thirty-five thousand now.
Yeah.
We're gonna put forward the twenty thousand.
Yeah, does that seem like a good number for that, that would allow you to, you know, to do the most high priority thing right away?
I think so.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then we wanna put forward the ten thousand dollars for the rec director, is that, is that a number you feel comfortable with?
Um, you know, I, I, my, my approach is pay the market, the problem is, I haven't seen any market on this.
Well, we don't, the problem is, is there's really not a market that we can compare ourselves to, other than, I mean, you take, uh, Wakefield, Wakefield's probably the closest I would think in the area, 'cause, I mean, you can't compare yourself to Sanford, can't compare yourself to Wells, their sporting programs are a whole different ballgame.
Yeah.
Get it?
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I mean, Wakefield's pretty advanced in their rec department too, and they're, that's pretty much full-time over there, I believe.
I think so.
So.
I just think they'll have somebody come in, do a great job, get it started.
Well, yeah, definitely.
Get recruited away, because we're, we're short on the money, that's all, I, I don't wanna overpay them, I don't wanna throw money away.
Would you rather fat that number up, saying we're taking away from some of the others for now?
Yeah, I, 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 it doesn't mean we have to spend it, David.
No, no, exactly, that's why I said.
Yeah, I, I, I just assume, you know, put it in there, and we can continue to look at the market, and, you know, we shouldn't spend any more than we have to, but, you know, let's make sure we, you know, that we don't get the person we want.
Little wiggle room, so that if we do find someone to come in and, you know, we can, you know, make an offer, they can tell us what they want, and see if we can meet their middle and have a little wiggle room. Ten thousand doesn't give us a lot.
We may get it for half of that, I have no idea what the market is, but, uh, let's see where it goes.
I think you'll find, you know, um, now right there's, you know, a hundred and sixty dollars a week, something like that.
Yeah.
Eighty dollars a week, roughly what the selectman make.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
So, um, okay, so what do you wanna, what would you like to inflate that number to?
Um, what do you get in there now, Michelle?
Uh, I have, I have ten thousand for the, for the stipend, and then I have seven hundred and sixty-five dollars for the taxes.
This is the rec director.
Why don't, uh, it, I can't imagine it being more than thirteen, let's just put it in there.
Yeah.
That's what I would suggest, and.
And that's how we're advertising it.
Let's, let's, uh.
Two fifty a week.
We're gonna do everything we can to come in less than that, and, but.
So we'd have, we'd have to budget fifteen thousand then.
Well, she'll, no, she'll, well, she'll do them li- separate lines, but she'll figure it out, she'll figure out the taxes. Yeah, because, Tom, remember, that's, we had, that's what we had kinda talked about, the two fifty a week, which is exactly thirteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I just don't know, I, I just don't know what it'll take, it's a new job, there is no market, and, you know, um.
Is that gonna be a separate one dumped into theirs?
You know, the rec committee's, you know, stressed out, you know, for, they've been doing a hell of a job, and it's just unfair, we need to fix this problem.
Oh, no, definitely, definitely, I, I agree with the thirteen thousand.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh.
Okay, so that brings us to some, some decisions. Um, with the proposal that the road commissioner put forward for the parking lot, based on the estimates that he got and came up with, we need another forty-six thousand dollars for our parking lot reserve fund to complete that project, whatever that project becomes.
And Jeff and Ben?
I kinda, I took, when we spoke at the, um, public, the, uh, budget meeting last time, when we had the, uh, road commissioners in, my concern was that we haven't come up with a plan and putting forward, uh, monies on a, something, we don't even know what we're doing yet, so I'm a little concerned with that, um.
Yeah.
Um, that'd be like putting a cart before the horse, wouldn't it?
Well, we've already put the cart.
I'd like to see you did, uh.
Seventy-five thousand in there already.
Yeah, we're gonna get that done.
Happened with it all year, so.
Well, I, I understand that, and, of course, we, uh, we've had a lot going on, but, I mean, he's, he's come up with a, a sort of a plan, yeah. It just doesn't look good for us to go to a public hearing, already have all our ducks in a row to rip the place down, before we get this, get the consensus of what we wanna do with this. You know, that's the only issue I have, so.
I think if we're going to it, we're holding, I mean, it's not historical, it's.
It's a liability.
It's sentimental purposes only, it's a liability, and it's.
No, I understand that, I, I, I think maybe my problem is, is, um, I'm trying to be transparent about this, and make sure that every, we come up with an idea of what we're gonna do with it all together, instead of saying, we're just gonna rip it down, make a parking lot.
Well, well, let's, I mean, let's, I mean, I know Will's got a plan, but one of the other things we had talked about, let's advertise it for a couple of weeks and put it on an upcoming agenda, I mean, we need the extra money anyways, right? It's gonna fall around that number, or are you guys just gonna make the decision?
So we have right now in that account, what?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand, that's what we put in last year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and we need an additional forty thousand.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, based on this.
His, his estimate here.
So give or take.
Forty-six on, on not having a plan, I, I, I just don't know where the number came from, it hasn't been bid, it's like, I don't think we, we bought into the concept yet, I, I know they've done some work on it, that's great. It, it just, David, I think of what I hear you saying, is let's not put any more money into the reserve until we know what we're doing.
Well, that's kinda my same thought, but, um, but at the same time, if we don't, okay, I mean, there's two ways of looking at it, if we don't, this is just gonna prolong this another year. If we do, we put the money forward, we can discuss it at town meeting, get a pretty good idea of where we're gonna roll with this, and it could be, um, amended on town floor to pull the money out, if, you know, the town decides they don't wanna do it, um, with Will's plan, or, um, or we put, put it forward, vote it in, and we get hot and heavy and, you know, start having some public hearings and do it, and then we have the money, but if we don't put the money forward, and we don't have to use it, I think we could put it forward that the money can go back in undesigned fund if it's not used.
That, the seventy-five thousand dollars is in a reserve fund.
Yeah, so that's in a reserve anyways, um, so, and I believe we'll, we'll, we'll soak up seventy-five grand pretty quick when you stop paving and everything else over here. Um, the forty thousand with the demo and all that, it's not an unrealistic number, it's just, I, I was concerned about no plan, you know, that's on us, that's on us as a select board. Uh, he came up with one on his own, but, uh, we haven't, um, so we're in a kind of a quagmire, if we don't put the money forward, then this will be a project that'll be happening in two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, I, I would, I would imagine, regardless of what happens to the old fire station, you're going to be reactive this year, where the insurance company comes and sees this parking lot and its hazards.
Yeah.
Um, the insurance company comes every spring, and so we're gonna be reactive, we're gonna rush, and we're gonna pay high prices for everything.
So, we could put the money forward, Tom.
I'm sorry, this has been raised as a safety issue by the, uh, property insurance carrier?
Yes.
Yes, we've had several people fall out in this parking lot because of all the dips and potholes and uneven pavement out there, so.
And we really can't reconstruct the parking lot until we figure out what we're gonna do with the building.
Yeah.
So, you know, the whole idea was, uh, because of the, uh, insurance problems that we have with the building itself, the, the, the town gym kinda failed on us. And then we looked at it like, well, with the issues we have with the insurance company, we shut it down, and now we have a building right now that's vacant, and it's still an insurance issue even being vacant, and, uh, this would be the time now to, uh, I guess, extend the parking lot, fix the parking lot we have here, and, um, create some of the parking issues that we have.
So, so is the insurance issue with the old building that they want torn down, or with the lot itself?
It's the lot itself, basically, uh.
The building's an issue too.
The building's an issue, it, I mean, it's, it, it leaks, it's.
We've had, we've had the floor done on a couple of different times, and, you know, it's to the point where, um, the money that we would have to put into, we'd have to have a structural engineer come in, tell us what to do to make it structurally sound, because it's an old block building, there's cracks in the walls and everything else, we've had water damage several times.
Mold.
Mold, we got mold issues, so when you start coming up with that, you say, well, what is the building being used for? Nothing. Um, do we need parking? Yes. Do we have to fix, fix the parking lot? Yeah. So, um, you know, at the end of the day, it's really a no-brainer, but, but trying to be transparent, wanted the input from the town, the townspeople, you know, what ideas we can do with it, but really, at the end of the day, you know, we'll probably come down to the same conclusion that, you know, um, we need more parking, um, we, right now, we're parking, a lot of the times, we're actually parking in the church parking lot, you know, it's not even our parking lot. Um, it, it, it comes down to it that maybe we should put the money forward, and then, um, uh, come up with a plan. I don't like doing that, I don't like putting the cart before the horse.
I don't, I don't like it either.
If we keep prolonging this like we've been doing, um, you know, this'll, you know, we'll have to go to another town meeting at some point, I don't wanna, you know, say, oh, yeah, well, I'll just have a special town meeting, let's just get it done, we'll talk about it on town floor.
You know, a, a, a few thoughts, um, based on what's been said, um, it sounds like, uh, there, there are some projects that we've partially funded or funded and, and, and we're not making progress on, and, um, I don't know how many of them are, I, I'd love to review them, but I, can we make it a regular item in our agenda to make sure that we are proactive with these things and move the projects along at a pace, and I know we all get busy and, and, uh, the meetings get filled up, but it seems to me we oughta be going through these systematically and trying to clean them up, just like the, um, you know, the backside of the, uh, of the, uh, town building. Um, you know, with the side, um, you know, that's been out there for a while.
Yeah.
I don't know how many of these things there are, but we just, we need to put them on the agenda and just kick them off one after the other and get them done.
No, that, that's a good idea, and all, all that, you know, we, we really, we really should be doing that, the side is something there, I think, overall, uh, not to make excuses or anything, but, between.
No, 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 I, I think.
Everything else that we've had to deal with, and then, um, you know, some, uh, department heads leaving, and, uh, stuff that we've had to deal with, that, you know, we've had to put our priorities, you know, in certain spots, and, you know, we've only got so many dollars in a day, um.
Yeah, the only other item I had, David, with that, is I know the, um, the capital planning committee had recommended that we have an energy study done of the, of the. had recommended that we have an engineering study done of the, of the, of the town, uh, town hall complex. And it, it would seem to me it would be worthwhile to have that done before we do anything with a parking lot or any sort of structural issues down there.
We already, we, we had, well, between our insurance agent and, um, our code officer went through it and made a huge list of things that were huge problems. You know, um, I think, I understand that the engineer, have an engineer come in and tell us something we already know. We, we know there's a problem out there.
Out, on, out where?
Out, we're talking about the old fire station, the old gym.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the town, the town hall. They share that parking lot. It's all, it's all one big conflict. And, um, I may be, it, it may be a complete, um, non-issue, but I think for relatively short money, it would be good to understand where that conflict is, how the town hall complex, uh, what kinda shape it is, what kinda money it's gonna need. Um, you know, what's the useful life of the various components of that thing? Um, and it seems to me that's useful to understand as we think about, uh, tearing that, raising that old fire station and redoing the grade there. Uh, there may be other concepts that come up if we find that there are issues here that we're just not aware of. And so I would suggest that, that we, um, that we, you know, do it, I guess it's a separate warrant or however that would be funded, but we move that forward. And I think it's all part of this discussion, understanding what we're gonna do with this area, with this parcel.
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm a little torn on whether or not we have to have an engineer come and tell us. You've heard my views on it. I mean, I guess it's fine.
We can always put it on an agenda item.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can, we can forward, I think, what was the, uh?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
We can go less than ten thousand if I might interrupt. Um, ten thousand was every piece of.
I've heard a couple of different numbers. I heard sixty-five, eighty-five, and ten.
You could, you are correct.
But that, that's just one number that we're still gonna go out to bid. So ten thousand honestly is safe or just in case it's not that one company that does sixty-five, correct?
Um, well.
Or you've gotten more than one?
They said do it. It's not really a, a bid. Uh, to do the, the, what I call the municipal complex.
Mm-hmm.
Fire station, school, and the rec thing would come into the ten thousand dollar range. If you adjusted the municipal building, this complex, be about sixty-eight hundred. I think it's a short money investment.
I would prob, I would support doing this building here, this complex.
That's all I wanna do.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, our town shed's brand new. Um, well, not brand new. I say that with, time's flying by.
Well, it looks like it's brand new.
It feels like I was digging a hole yesterday. But, um, um, that's just something we just gotta maintain, which we, we know what we're supposed to be doing down there. Um, the, this building here, um, maybe that would be a way to come up with our plan.
I agree.
Because, you know, I mean, I can go over here and set grades and give you all kinds of ideas, but that's me. Um, and, uh, but at the end of the day, you know, there's something there where, you know, if this project becomes a really big deal, we, we might have to look at different avenues anyways. So if we have some sort of engineered plan of what we're gonna do in the parking lot, what's gonna work out there? Because, you know, you have all your handicap accessible stuff that you gotta worry about. There's a lot of that stuff there that, you know, um, I'm pretty sure they, you know, our road commissioner probably not up to date on, you know, because they don't do a lot of that stuff, you know? Like sidewalks, stuff like that, that maybe. What's that?
These engineers or this study is not gonna really, like, do a redesign of that complex. It's really just looking at the building. But I think all those things you're talking about, David, are incredibly important.
Well, I think that if, you know, we're gonna spend the sixty-eight hundred dollars to have them come in and tell us, you know, we gotta put a sign on the building, that's another thing. But I'd like to see them come in and give us, you know, I'd actually rather have them come in and do a plan for us of, okay, how can we get the max amount of parking spaces here? Can't handicap accessible with, um, you know, with, you know, getting rid of that building, getting rid of the, uh, the handicap issues that we have right here next to the, uh, um, entrance to the CEO and stuff like that. I'd be for that. Having them come up here and tell us, yeah, you know, if you don't do this, do that, you know, you're not taking care of your building. That's, I don't know, I just, that's different to me. So I would be for putting, putting forward seven or eight thousand dollars to do that.
Well, David, it seems to me we already have money set aside for the parking lot. Is there any reason why we couldn't use that fund to do exactly what you're talking about?
Well, and we should. We should.
Yeah, it's, it's designed. I think it's very, I assume it's very appropriate. But I also would like to see the design or the engineering work done on the building itself. I just wanna make sure that, that we understand what those conditions are and there aren't some hidden problems here that we really need to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much what you're doing is you're asking for like a home inspection.
Yeah, well, yeah. It's a home inspection, but it also tells you.
It's a home inspection on steroids.
Not only, not only what is wrong today, but what are you gonna have to deal with over the next five and ten years in the building? It, it, it's really a look forward. So, um, and, and allows you to think, to, to be thoughtful about the ongoing sort of capital renewal of that complex. It's incredibly important to start building in the town. And I, you know, I think we just need to maintain it.
Well, yeah, yeah. No, I understand. Um, so where, Michelle, is that? Where are we here?
So that was already built in, right, Michelle?
So the ten thousand dollars was in there.
Right.
You put that in, yeah, okay.
So we change that to eight thousand and move on or just leave it at ten?
See, I'd rather, I'd rather make a lineup for an engineer period so that we can use that, um, that line for doing the engineering inspection on this and, and an engineered plan on this parking lot. So leave it at the ten and leave that line for engineering for the, uh, acting, uh, town hall complex. Does that sound reasonable?
If we need, and, and that's fine, uh, 'cause I think it captures the two concepts we're talking about. If we find that ten thousand isn't adequate and it's primarily being driven by the need to, you know, look at the, the, the parking lot and handicap and those kinds of issues, there's nothing says we can't use some of the seventy-five thousand that's been put aside or forty-five thousand, whatever it was for the lot, to, to sort of complete that work.
Well, I mean, the problem is with your thinking is it's fine and all that, but if, say, these numbers that Will has put through are legit numbers in the forty thousand, you know, after the seventy, the forty thousand, what's that, um, hundred and, uh, one fifty or something like that? Hundred some thousand dollars, that's already allocated for doing the job now. So there wouldn't be monies there for the engineer per se.
Yeah. Um, well, I, but what we have is inadequate to do the job anyway.
Well, we don't know that. We're not, we're not sure.
We're either gonna have to add to it or, or wait until two thousand twenty-four to actually do the work.
Yeah. I, I think we put forward the monies that they're asking for, put it in the reserve for that parking lot. And then we take the ten thousand, do it as a acting town hall engineering account. Okay? And whatever's left in that, we can use towards that. So whatever the guy, the inspector, the home inspector, whatever is, whoever's coming to do this, have we have left from that money? Because it may not be that much. It may only be four, three or four thousand. Who knows? You know, depends what we get for bids and all that, which I'm, I'm not really for putting an engineer out the bid. I really, that, I'm not a, that's, that's something you don't put out the bid. What you do is you make calls, you find good references and because, you know, um, that's something there that you really, is really technical and, you know, you don't always get what you pay for.
Right.
So you've, you've put that, you've put that ten thousand forward?
I, I am. I think whether we bid it or not, we can continue to talk about.
And you have an issue with us making that line item?
No, not at all. Not at all.
How about you, Michelle? Is that all right?
That's good.
Good.
Okay, next subject. Um, the tanker loan. We had discussed putting that on to pay off.
Definitely.
What's the interest rate?
Oh.
It would have to be zero, Tom, because I wanna pay it off. You got the money.
No, it's, it's two, isn't it two or three percent? It's two percent, three point eight. I can tell you real quick.
It, it's three percent?
I think so.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. You know, uh, you know, in today's environment, that makes a lot of sense to pay it off. Uh, how long is the loan?
Um, it was, uh, a, um, let's see.
What year did we do it, Michelle?
Two, oh, last year.
It was COVID, right? Because we voted on it during COVID.
Two years ago, yeah.
Two years ago.
So I think it was this one.
So it's paying it off. It was a five-year loan.
So you got three more years?
Right.
Four percent.
That was four percent?
Yep, not to exceed five years.
And I think, Tom, really the thinking.
Four percent, four percent. I, I, I think we should pay it off.
Yeah, I think what we really intended to do was, I don't think we ever intended to actually do the full term. I think what it was, was at the time, take a loan. Now, we probably could have pulled that undesigned fund at the time, but, but it would have been tight. But take the loan and then when we come into a year like this where, you know, we have that undesigned fund balance that we have to, you know, not, we don't have to unload, but we feel comfortable unloading, this would be the time to do it. That gets us way ahead of the game. Because we paid off a bunch of stuff last year too, and that's all helped us along down the road.
Right.
I, I think that was a good move and I think paying off the, this loan makes sense, so I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Um, next topic of discussion is the sixty-five thousand dollars for the rest of our revaluation fund. We put a hundred and thirty last year. He's supposed to start this year sometime.
This year, yep.
Yep.
So this is the last payment for that.
Love it.
Yep. Tom?
Uh, so has this contract already been issued?
Well, we have an ongoing contract, we have an ongoing contract with the assessors to do the, the day-to-day assessing work from Ds to transfers, you know, to, to the real estate tax. And they handle all of our assessing. Um, as far as this actual full revaluation, there's no contract that's been signed. It was, um, just proposed numbers that they gave us.
Okay.
So that we could budget.
So this will, this will allow us to conclude the, the evaluation, reevaluation?
Yeah, it'll be a town-wide, every property revaluation, which we haven't done now for over ten years.
Which right now with the price of housing and everything, that would be a big benefit for the town acting.
So that's just.
Home owner, but.
Paying that off.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, uh, we started it. We gotta finish it, so.
Yeah. Okay, and so next topic of discussion is where do you wanna spend the rest of your money?
So, well, and before you, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in if it's okay. So it is ten minutes of five. Michelle doesn't know this yet, but we have to, um, the warrant finance and the school is, has, needs that school warrant by tomorrow because they're voting on it and I've got a few things with you. So I'm hoping that maybe we can pick up the remainder of this budget workshop. You can look over your ARPA and you can look over, put down in writing where you wanna spend. Michelle's gonna tell you how much. And let's think about it for a week and, and, you know, get back together next week because the school needs us to finish this warrant. And I don't know about you, Michelle, but it's already five and.
I got some ideas, Tom.
Oh, that's what I'm worried about.
I'm sure you do, David.
So is that okay with you, Michelle?
Next, next Wednesday, I'm gonna be traveling.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, not a good day. Could we do it like Monday or Tuesday?
Yeah, we're gonna wait for Michelle's, um, schedule here. I mean, we really, I mean, if, if you put the time into putting your ideas out in writing, and I have no problem doing it for you if you tell me what they are, and review the ARPA, I mean, it really should take less than an hour. Do you wanna come over Tuesday afternoon, Michelle?
Um, I can do after two on Tuesday.
All right, so why don't we do either three to four, just so it's not, she's not losing too much time over there?
I got a job, so.
Four to five?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. So four to five on Tuesday.
Could I ask you to just send me a confirmation on that? I'm on the road right now, so I, I didn't, can't write that.
Does that work?
Yep. Does that work, Michelle?
Four to five is fine.
Four, okay.
I don't wanna.
Thank you, Michelle, for doing that.
Four to five, but you gotta do your homework. And I mean that politely. Michelle, how much are you looking at them, even if you put, you know, X amount to offset taxes or X amount, you gotta come up with a total for the whole number.
Yeah, so, um, I, I guess it's gonna depend on where you, where you wanna stay with your fund balance. Um, one month, two months, three months. Um. I'm estimating right now, based on the school's budget, uh, based on our revenues and based on last year's municipal valuation. I mean, it's gonna change, um, as of April first, but we don't know what those numbers are right yet. Um, putting forward five hundred thousand dollars at tax commitment. And then beyond that.
I'm sorry, what does that mean? Five hundred thousand at tax commit? What does that mean?
So when we commit taxes, we use five hundred thousand dollars of our undesigned fund as like a revenue, another revenue to, to reduce the net assessment.
Oh, so you're gonna take in five hundred thousand as a funding source for the budget?
Right. I mean, typically, we've, in the past, we've used, uh, anywhere from two to three hundred thousand. I, I'd like to reserve five hundred thousand for that purpose. That number might go down. Um. But I, I'd like to hold on to that. So I, and we've, so in our budget that we've already gone through and agreed on, we have three hundred and forty-eight thousand spent in these extra things.
Out of that five hundred?
No, the five hundred.
No, afterwards.
In addition to.
I'm, I'm having trouble following this. I'm sorry. Um. If, David, have you been briefed on all this?
Excuse me? I, I, I don't know what, I don't know at the end of the day what our ending, um, surplus is yet.
No, he, so the answer is, Tom, no, he has not been briefed on this. He's just, from the prior years, he's following along.
So what happens is, is, so we, say we do our budget, Tom, we come up with this number and we, our tax rate is twelve point oh five right now, and we wanna keep it there. We could take monies out of the undesigned fund to offset it and get back to that number.
She's already playing, she's already worked in the five hundred thousand.
So the five hundred thousand's already been worked into the numbers now, okay? It'll be fiddled around a little bit because we just deducted some money out. I don't think we added a whole lot. We deducted more than we added.
From front of.
So that number would probably decrease. Um, but, um, so all that does is it makes it so that we have, um, it keeps us at the tax rate we, we normally are at roughly, in that vicinity. You know, we'll be within cents, right?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, if we reserve five hundred thousand for tax commitment purposes, uh, then we know that we're not gonna have to raise that tax rate. If the board is okay with raising the tax rate, uh, then we don't necessarily need to hold on to that much.
I'm in favor of keeping it flatline. We've been able to do it the last two years. I'd like to make it three. And then we, we take the, uh, we put the five hundred forward. We, we look at three months worth of bills. Would that be fine?
Three months is our max, based on policy.
I, I, I'd rather have the max.
How much is three, how much is three months?
So, uh, one point two million.
So now we're up to one point seven million with the offset rate of the five hundred thousand?
No.
No, no, no. So one point two million is what we need.
No, I, I know that. I was taking the undesigned fund and subtracting what we're, we're leaving one point two in there. We're moving five hundred thousand for the upcoming taxes. So what's left, right?
One point seven is just gonna be what we will, we can leave in the account later on down the road. We got way more than that, so.
I'm just taking, I'm just trying to get what the first.
We're all starting at the wrong end. We need the full number.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm, that's where I'm going. One point two is three months. Five hundred thousand she wants to use, so that's one point seven.
So in total, including that five hundred thousand, so we have these extra projects that we've already agreed on. The sixty-five thousand for the revaluation, the forty-six thousand dollars for the parking lot, the twenty thousand dollars for the rec parking lot, um. the loan payoff and the engineer is just over three hundred thousand.
Okay.
So we've got, if we're keeping our maximum three months, we wanna bring down one point four million. So we were at eight, so another six hundred thousand dollars into and a hundred thousand dollars to the school, so that brings us down to five hundred thousand dollars that we need to spend.
Yep.
Um spend or reserve, I shouldn't say spend, because I know we have these big bridge projects that are.
Talking about, yep.
I've got I've got some ideas with that. So so like we were talking before, Tom, is, you know, I I just don't wanna say, we say we have six hundred thousand, five hundred, five, we're five hundred now, okay? Say five hundred thousand is our number, you know, I just don't wanna dump that in departments and say, you know, go to town without having some sort of idea what's, you know, and it's kinda hard to have them come to us now and say, okay, well.
Right, you're not spending it just to spend it.
What I would, what I would, what I'm recommending is uh I like to uh put some money forward to the uh road bridge project. I like to put um a hundred thousand into that. I like to put two hundred thousand into a separate um reserve article for the uh West Shore Drive project. And then um that leaves us um two hundred thousand for a uh um public works uh reserve fund of two hundred thousand dollars. Then what that does is it would leave the money in, so, you know, when Dennis asked, we were talking about the two hundred thousand in paving or whatever, but problem is we don't have that paving plan in front of us. So what it does is it'll have the money sitting aside so that, say, a project comes up that we need to do, or um next year, we don't have the funds we can pull out of that to offset their paving. To keep them at where they are.
Yeah, um a few questions. Um I'm trying to follow all these numbers here and it would be useful to see something in writing, but I um it, I I wanna make sure that I, are we using any reserves to cover what I would be sort of consider ongoing standard operating budget items?
No.
Good, okay, so we're using it to fund some of these one-time things we've already talked about and David's proposing some additional one-time things.
Right, for the five hundred spend down or place in reserves.
I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna dump the money and I don't wanna turn around and, you know, and, you know, add on another two or three hundred thousand dollars to to lower taxes when, you know, we know what happens when you do that, you know, we lower the tax rate.
Raise them the following year.
That's exactly my point, so I would rather see that put in a reserve. We know the bridge over West Shore Drive needs to be done, we're working on the engineer now. We know the road bridge is an issue, you know, until we figure out what Milton's gonna do, we got the money in the bank. We have the money, put it in the bank and and then I I, you know, um after some of the conversations that were being had at the finance committees and this and that, um I thought it was uh to do a uh public works um capital improvement, uh it gives it a broad um use instead of just one in case something else comes up, um if there's some overages on the bridge stuff, you know, that's there. Um, you know, I think it's something, obviously, we'd have to go to special town meeting to vote out, you know, vote to use, but it's there and um and it doesn't affect our tax rate, it keeps us right where we are roughly. And um and we're not and we're not wastefully spending. And I don't like reserve accounts anymore than anybody else does, but at this point, I think this is really the only thing we can do.
I, you know, I like all of that, David, my, um I I think if we're gonna have a um, you know, the ones where there are specific projects with numbers associated with it, I think that's fine. Where you got, was it two hundred thousand dollars that was just in a public works budget?
It's for, it's a, it's a public works uh capital improvement fund, okay? Where um say, I'm I'm just brainstorming because I do this on the fly. Say, uh, we're doing a big paving project and um say, you know, hey, we then one of the road commissioners really liked to extend or whatever, we have a special town meeting, it's something, we can go into that and extend the project if need be, or say we have a, you know, the culvert out there and the H road blows out where the beaver dams are, you know, and they disappear, that money's there for an emergency. Um or or we can use it to offset paving next year if we don't have the money to give them their two fifty apiece.
Would you have to go back to the town to spend it on any of those things?
Yes.
Okay, then that's fine with me, I just don't want it to be at anyone's discretion.
No, because what happens when you do that, that money gets spent before we even get on the town floor, so.
Yeah, exactly, no, no, it all ought to be, I think it would be great to, if you have some things like that in mind, I I I would, I would reference those as part of this, not that you're restricted to them, but at least give them an idea of what you're thinking about. I, for instance, the widening of the H road.
That, well, that's, that right there, Tom, I understand the widening of the H road, uh but that is already part of his three hundred thou, well, two hundred fifty thousand he's already uh accounting for.
Okay.
So this is kind of a a more broad use of it. And and it's at our fingertips if if need be, so that's, that was just, that was me thinking on the fly.
Okay, all right, as long as it requires town, you know, citizens approval or town town meeting approval, I'm fine with it.
Any reserve account, you'd have to anyways, wouldn't you?
Uh, no, if it's a statutory reserve, the board of selectmen are the superintendents. But if it's just set up as a a a reserve fund, not a statutory reserve, but we're gonna call it a capital improvement fund, we're not gonna attach the word reserve to it because that causes confusion. Um if it's just a capital improvement fund for a specific project, that has to be voted on by town meeting.
Yeah.
And that's what you want.
Great, okay.
Nope, I like it.
So so by next Tuesday, Michelle will have an updated draft and everything, we'll have the bonuses for the ARPA, we'll have balances and where exactly we're at, but Kim wants a chance to to, she'll agree with or support a majority of of what was kinda talked about today, but she's got some ideas for that five hundred thousand as well. So we'll let her present and, Tom, if you wanna break down, if you have any differences in that five hundred thousand, we'll work on that next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yep, four to five.
Four to five.
Four to five.
Okay.
All right.
I guess um we'll adjourn.
Are we all, are we all set on the siding, where do we stand with the ARPA for the siding?
It was on tonight's agenda to get approved.
We were gonna take care of that tonight, but uh we can't get a quorum.
Are we ready to do it at our next meeting?
We will be.
Great, great, and uh, okay, great, good meeting, thank you everyone for indulging me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Problem.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you, bye-bye.
Okay, I guess.
We adjourned?
We're adjourned, thank you.